I'd like to call to order the July 17, 2023, Wilson County Commission Meeting Order. Thank all of our guests for being here tonight and appreciate your attendance and ask you to come back any opportunity that you may have. Just not at this time, we'll ask Commissioner Scruggs to come forward with the prayer and pledge, and would like to ask you to remember two people, please, along with whoever else is mentioned. Corey Johns, he's our Joint Economic Development Director. Corey's mom, she's about 82, she's in Loretta, Tennessee, had a heart attack today and not doing well, and he called me to let me know that and asked for your prayers on that. And Commissioner Marlowe may not want me to say, but he's having some surgery tomorrow, so would like you to mention him, remember him as well.
Doug's going with his prayer. He's the owner of DNR Automotive. Doug's been here twice for me, he's a good friend.
I really hate to see him because every time I see him, my truck tears up. I haven't seen you in a while.
You cost me time.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for one more day alive, Lord. We thank for the lot of free citizens who has come this way tonight, Lord. Remember our commissioners here tonight, men and women, Lord, as they take care of the fairs of this county, Lord, in the way you see fit, Lord. Pray for the ones that have been asked prayer for, that are sick, Lord, and had heart attacks, Lord. Each and every one out in this world, but most of all, Lord, pray that each and every one will find their salvation for their soul to fall towards ever last too late. These things, as I'm begging your name, amen.
Amen.
Blessed be to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ring. Do you will please press yes on your panel to record your presence at tonight's meeting? Almost 100%. 24 present and one absent. At this time, we'll have public comment period, and public comment, of course, is restricted to the agenda items that we have. I only have one name on here, and I believe Ms. Betty, you want to speak on the rezoning that we got tonight, so we'll have a separate public hearing for that, okay? So we will get to you in just a second on that one. I don't see anybody else on my list or anybody else that wants to speak during public comment period. Nobody signed in, nobody stepped into the front, so we'll close public comment period and we'll move on now with the report from the Steering Committee, Commissioner Fields.
Steering Committee met tonight, and the minutes of that meeting will be in next month's packet. I move that they be received and filed.
Motion is second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The adoption of the agenda, Commissioner Fields.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the agenda be adopted as presented.
Got a motion in the second, or is it second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for that. And there is no consent agenda, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. This time, we'll do the special recognition and we'll do Resolution 23-7, a day of prayer for our schools, and I'll introduce Commissioner Marlowe to handle those duties. Not for sure if anyone is here to stand with you on that.
If Eddie Callis and any members of the Mount Juliet Quanis Club would like to come up, they may while this is being done, or you can stay where you are.
Yep.
Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, designating July 30, 2023, as a day of prayer for our schools in Wilson County. Whereas, a day of prayer for our schools was conceived by members of the Quanis Club of Lebanon, Tennessee during the summer of 1999 after the murder of several students and a teacher at Columbine High School in Littleton, Colorado. This tragedy, which caused America across the nation to become concerned for the safety of their children at school. Sadly, this was not the last example of violence in an American school. The first observation of the day of prayer for our schools was sponsored by the Quanis Club of Lebanon on August 14, 1999. This project has been repeated each year since, with the 23rd Annual Observance of the Day of Prayer for Our Schools to be held on July 30, 2023. The Quanis Club of both Lebanon and Mount Juliet have joined together to sponsor this community-wide project. This project seeks to unite the entire community in prayer for the safety of our children by encouraging all churches and places of worship to dedicate a portion of their worship service that day to a special prayer seeking God's help in keeping our children safe at school. The first two objects of the Quanis are to give primary to the human and spiritual rather than the material values of life and to promote the daily living of the golden rule in all human relationships. With no greater blessing from God than the gift of our children, the Quanis members believe that this safety of our children at school should be a very high priority, and they are requesting the entire community to join in this effort. Quanis also believes that the solution to many of the problems existing in our society are spiritual in nature rather than political, and new laws and new laws and more metal detectors in our schools will not change the way people treat each other. Whereas, members of the Quanis Club believe that there is no better thing than prayer to seek a safe school environment for our children. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that in the furtherance of the efforts of the members of the Quanis Club of Lebanon and Mount Juliet, Wilson County, Tennessee, we hereby designate July 30, 2023, as a day of prayer for our schools in Wilson County and urge the entire county to join in this effort.
Motion is approved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Marlowe. With the second one now, the resolution that we love our teachers, I know Miss Melanie mentors in the back and could come forward, as well as Mr. Mark Hinesley. I'm not for sure if the Watertown Chamber President is with me tonight or not, incidentally, but if you will come forward, please, at this time, be with Mr. Marlowe, he will read this and maybe have some comments as well, since he's a former educator. And I would ask one of y'all to speak on what you're doing to the promotion of that you love teachers, activities that y'all have planned for this coming week, if y'all would do that after he reads this.
One of you come over here. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, designating the week of July 23, 2023, as we love our Wilson County Teachers Week in Wilson County. Whereas, the Wilson County is blessed with tremendous education system, both public and private. From in-person learning to virtual and homeschool, we are proud to support our teachers in all facets of learning, and it's fitting that we show our appreciation of our students and teachers prepare for a new school year. The Lebanon, Wilson County, Mount Juliet, and Watertown Chambers of Commerce came together to form an initiative showcasing the love we have for our teachers in 2022. As returning teachers entered the school, they were greeted by residents and organizations holding signs that expressed their admiration for our teachers, further demonstrating that the small act of kindness can change someone's day. This effort proved successful among both Wilson County and Lebanon Special School District as well as our private schools, Friendship Christian, Cedar Preparatory Academy, and Mount Juliet Christian Academy. Whereas, it is appropriate to continue this initiative this year by proclaiming we love our teachers' week, by celebrating our teachers throughout Wilson County, and whereas most people moving to our communities identify education and our teachers as their main reason for selecting Wilson County as their new place to call home. Our educators are helping to shape, excuse me, future generations of leaders, business owners, employees, and invested residents. They do so while facing some of the most trying and challenging workplace environments in our lifetime, as they are not isolated from the growing number of outside pressures of their chosen profession. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Wilson County Commission of Wilson County, Tennessee, we hereby designate the week of July 23, 2023, as we love our teachers' week in Wilson County and urge all citizens to join in the effort.
Motion is approved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And a round of applause for our teachers.
This is a first, I get to talk. Mayor, Mayor, Commissioners, thank you very much for doing this for us tonight. Started a couple of years ago, conversation with the Director of Schools, morale, teacher retainment, many of the same things and challenges that you face as a commission, but we knew we could do something. We didn't know exactly how it would turn out, but Melanie and myself and the team at Everyone's Wilson, Superintendent Director of Schools, Luttrell, and Brian Hutto said, you know what, we can do this. And if you haven't yet partaken or seen what it is, it's basically just a fan club of admiration, if you will, people meeting the teachers on their first day back in the school building without the students that will fan out all across the county. Believe the public schools are next Wednesday, Lebanon Special School District is Thursday, and a couple of the private schools might even be on the 31st maybe, but if you didn't see it, you wouldn't believe it. We had teachers that were coming in, bringing their stuff, and they started crying. They were so appreciative of it. We know that money is important, but so is appreciation, and so we, Melanie's team created a sign-up genius. You can pick any one of the schools, the time, it tells you where to park, you're out maybe 30 minutes. We're giving the signs away this year for free and posters, so I invite you, if you've got time to spare next Wednesday morning, Thursday, sign up for the school closest to you, maybe you have kids or grandkids or know somebody that's going to school, just join us for a few minutes. The look on their faces and the appreciation they have when we're out there in the neighborhoods in the schools telling them how much we love our teachers, we're doing the best we can to try to get them off to a good start and help your efforts as well, so.
Thank you, yeah. It is a great event, and it is emotional to see their faces as they see people, so if you could join us, that would be good. We're going to try to get to as many of them as we can. Thank you both for your initiative here, thank you for being here tonight.
Appreciate you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Folks.
This time, we have a public hearing for two rezonings, one of those may have been pulled tonight, but we'll let Tom let us know that when he gets here. I will need a motion to go out of session.
Make a motion, we go out of session.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Tom, floor's yours.
Okay, before I make the public hearing announcements, I will let everyone know that we will hold the public hearing on this matter. However, the applicants for the Susan Gibson rezoning off Bradshaw Road contacted our office late this afternoon and asked to withdraw their request for consideration. There won't be a need for a consideration by the County Commission after the public hearing, but we will hold the public hearing nonetheless. Ladies and gentlemen, a public hearing will be held before the Wilson County Commission on Monday, July 17, 2023, at 7:00 PM or thereafter in the County Commission Room at the Wilson County Courthouse located at 228 East Main Street here in Lebanon, Tennessee, to hear comments on the following application submitted by Joe Haddix on behalf of property owner Susan Gibson, requesting to have property rezoned from A1 agricultural to R1 rural residential. The property is located at 724 Bradshaw Road and contains approximately 17.78 acres. The property is further referenced as Wilson County Property Map 26, Parcel 67.01. A copy of this application has been on file in the Wilson County Development Services Office Planning Division in the basement here at 228 East Main Street, has been available for inspection during regular business hours. The rezoning request will be heard on final reading, actually won't in this case, following this public hearing. Anyone desiring to comment is requested to come forward at this time on this particular case.
So if I understand correctly, we will take comments on 724 Bradshaw Road tonight, although we will not be voting on that one at all, but if you want to speak, Ms. Betty, the floor is yours. At three minutes, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Betty Johnstone, I live at 722 Heritage Road, and my property backs up to the Bradshaw property. And I just would like to request that, I know that the requested rezoning has been pulled, but anyone else that property's still on the market, and if whoever buys it may want to request again for it to be rezoned. And I just want to say that there's a water problem, a drainage from that property, and that it drains onto my property and causes a lot of backup of water when it rains really hard. And I think if you, the more properties, if you build homes on that property, it's just going to make my water issue worse. So I'd like to request that it not be rezoned, if it ever comes up again, that it not be rezoned to R1, but to stay A1. That's really all I had to say, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Betty. Anyone else wishing to speak on the property on 724 Bradshaw Road? Seeing that, we'll move forward with the second rezoning.
Ladies and gentlemen, we do have another rezoning on the agenda tonight. Application has been submitted by Kurt McKeithen, requesting to rezone property from R1 rural residential to C1 neighborhood commercial zoning. The property is located at 8924 Stewart's Ferry Pike. The property contains approximately .53 acres and is further referenced as Wilson County Property Map 116, Parcel 108.01. Again, a copy of this request has been on file in the Wilson County Development Services Office Planning Division here in the basement at 228 East Main Street in Lebanon, Tennessee, and has been available for inspection during regular business hours. The rezoning request will be heard on final reading by the Wilson County Commission following this public hearing. Anyone desiring to comment is requested to come forward at this time.
Anyone here wishing to speak on 8924 Stewart's Ferry Pike? Please step forward now, state your name and address for the record. Seeing that, we will close public comment period, and a motion to go back into session.
No movement.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Tom?
Again, application's been made by Kurt McKeithen, requesting to rezone property from R1 rural residential to neighborhood commercial C1 designation located at 8924 Stewart's Ferry Pike, or the property is located at 8924 Stewart's Ferry Pike. The property contains approximately .53 acres and has been referenced as Wilson County Property Map 116, Parcel 108.01. The rezoning of property request was presented to the County Planning Commission on Friday, June 21, 2023, and is being forwarded to the County Commission with a positive recommendation.
Mr. Jones, is it in your district?
Yes, I'd recommend approval based on staff recommendation.
Tagged.
Any other discussion? Seeing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The record is factored with your names.
Hope you guys have a good evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Tom. Report from the Minutes Committee, Commissioner Fields.
The Minutes Committee met tonight. Copy of those minutes are in your packet, however, there is a correction to be acknowledged. It's on page 16, at the bottom, Commissioner Rich is listed as a county employee and he is not. So with that, I would move that the minutes be received and filed.
Okay. Was there one, was there one other? Mr. Clark? Was there something, as you mentioned, that needed to be changed or not?
It was, it was not a mistake.
It was, it was okay?
Yes.
Got you. So I hear a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
No movement.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good to go. Reading of the minutes?
Motion to discuss the meaning of the minutes?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At this time, I'd ask Ms. Helen McPeak to come forward, and she, during my time, and she was going to talk to you a little bit about the fair that's coming up. I would like to commend her and all of her team. The fair is undertaken as it exists and is a 12-month-a-year job already, tackling the state fair, which they may or may not have asked for, but the state fair kind of asked for them, I think, at the end of the day. It did bring us 14 more million, but there is more work for you to do, so thank you and all of your team for the work that you do to make this happen, and the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mayor, and the Commissioners for allowing us to come and share a little bit about this year's fair. We have put packets on your places, and in there, there is a letter on all the special activities that's going to be going on. We would love to have you at every one of them, or any chance that you get to be at the fair, we'd love to have you. There's also a schedule of events that'll let you know what's going on every day of the fair, it'll let you know what the prices are and that kind of thing. There's also a special flyer in there on the entertainment that will be at the fair, and we'll be going through, through some of that. Also, we gave you a little snippet, just a little booklet, I call it the cheat sheet because it's a summary of what all is going on at the fair. You've also got the catalog, so you can reference that, and that's got all the advertisements and that kind of thing in it. But this year is 95 Reasons to Celebrate Tennessee. We've tried to unite all of Tennessee in this, and we welcome everybody to come to Wilson County because we've got such a great place here. The theme that goes along with that 95 reasons is we have got all rows, R-O-W-S, lead to Tennessee in '23, and our agricultural commodity focus this year is a year of corn. So we've got all kinds of neat things, competitions and things to have for corn. The mayor did bring up that we have been able to bring in to the county, to the Ag Center, $14 million of capital improvements to the grounds. Those are still in the planning stages, most of it has been paid out, we still lack a little bit, don't we, Mayor?
We do.
So, and we are going to be asking for some more funding for the Ag Center. One of the big things that we, the Wilson County Fair, Wilson County Promotions, took on the state fair was to make road improvements. We have been needing to make road improvements out in front of the Ag Center, at the Interstate Exchange, that is something that we have needed for a long time. It's going to take a while to get there, but it is in progress, and we're very pleased with that. Widening of Peyton Road and Padore Parkway, we just got word today, matter of fact, that we will be getting some federal funding. We got some last year to help with Peyton Road, and we got some more last, last week of $2.4 million to help with that. We're still hoping and praying over the Watertown interchange improvements, that's going to take several years before we can get that done. Something else that it has done, that has been a goal of ours, is unifying the entire state. And by us having the Travel Tennessee exhibit with that, the county's painted on the floor. We just hung today in the new Made in Tennessee building, a 20-foot by six-foot quilt that each county produced on what their county is known for. And so I hope you'll make sure that you go in and see that quilt during the fair. It's pretty, pretty special. It has also allowed us to engage in more Tennessee businesses, becoming more than just the Wilson County Fair. Now we are able to reach businesses, businesses from across the state and help with the things that we're trying to do. It also, the Department of Agriculture has been really good about working with us, and I'm going to be sharing with you a little bit more about the Pick Tennessee products experience that we're, that they will be doing during the fair. Further enhance fair support across the nation, of course, the International Association of Fairs and Expositions, we have got state fairs that's going to be visiting our fair. We have got South Carolina that's bringing 18 people. We have got the Texas State Fair that's going to be coming and visiting the fair. The Georgia National Fair is going to be coming, and we've just received word that we've got 15 Japanese students coming. 4H is hosting them during the fair, and so they will be visiting our fair this year. Also, having the state fair brought the FFA have breakfast to Wilson County, or back to Wilson County, I should say, Mr. James E. Ward, who the Ag Center is named after, he is the one that started that initiative. So we are very pleased and very proud that, to bring that back to Wilson County. And also, last year, in 2022, all 95 counties were represented at the fair, we know we had visitors from, from all of those, plus they had exhibits there in the Travel Tennessee. We had 39 states and 14 countries that we know of visited the fair. Okay, so much to see and do at the fair. I've probably already gone over some of this, but we pride ourselves in being Tennessee's largest outdoor classroom, because there, there is so much to see and do. We were ranked number 22 among the top 50 fairs. We had record-breaking attendances this last year, and y'all know that weather either makes you or breaks you, and we had great weather last year, and so we're praying for, for good weather this year, but we had, and that is using our formula, okay, of people that don't pay as well as people that do pay, but a record attendance of 776,195. We had 11 stages of entertainment, y'all, this year we've got 15 stages of entertainment. Over 100 livestock shows, we've actually got closer to 150 livestock shows, over 150 other events, different motorsports events happen every single night, over 21,000 entries last year, and over $320,000 were paid in premiums last year, and that will even be more this year. We still continue to have the Wilson County Fair competitions, okay? That is something we want to hold on to and make happen. Matter of fact, our goal is for every county in the state to have a fair of some kind, that they can participate then in the Tennessee State Fair. You know, every county is unique, every county fair is unique, and it builds around what we have available. We just get to showcase it here and bring all those people in. Youth Day is on Monday of the fair, we'll have 4H and FFA from all across the state here, and that will be a full day. Last year, we had 2,263 volunteers that gave over 108,000 hours to put on the fair. Many of you in this room helps with the fair, and we do appreciate that. If anybody that's not helping with the fair, we want you to be there, but if you'd like to help, we would love to have you. Come see me, I'd love for you to help. Okay, the fair theme, I've already gone through that. Our agricultural commodity is year of corn this year, we're even going to have a corn-eating contest this year, we've got that. The new Pick Tennessee Experience, I wanted to share with you a little bit about that. In the Turner Evans Building this year, we've got to have a Pick Tennessee store. There's over 2,700 products that are produced in Wilson, not Wilson County, in the state, and a lot of those will be highlighted in this Pick Tennessee Experience. There'll be a demonstration stage, and there'll be given giveaways every day, and a different Tennessee ag commodity will be highlighted every day. In the new Made in Tennessee building, that will include the Travel Tennessee Exhibits, the Best of Tennessee State Champion, where all of those county fairs, they will bring their first place and Best of Show winners in those categories to the Tennessee State Fair to compete for the Best of Tennessee. Now that is from, their fairs from 2022, to make it a level playing field for all of those fairs to compete, and we're not competing against any fair for this year, so, but, but you get to carry home that Best of Tennessee Champion ribbon for that. Okay, tickets are on sale now, of course, we've got the mega ticket that is $30, that's good for fair admission and your carnival admission for one time. We've also got the season tickets that you can come all 10 days of the fair for $45. And then new this year is our Farm to Table Dinner. Tennessee Department of Agriculture is sponsoring this, it's $125 for that ticket, but that give you a whole night at the fair. A catered meal from Edible Nashville will be there, a local chef will be serving local produced goods from, from farmers here in Tennessee. You have this in your packets, but we want to, we would love to have you at these special activities. We're going to have a milking and corn shelling competition there in front of the Turner Evans Building this year, where the Pick Tennessee Experience is going to be at 5:30. At 5:30, we will have a ribbon cutting there. At 6 o'clock, we'll have the fair grand opening in front of the new Made in Tennessee Building, there at the flagpole where the three Tennessee stars are. Inside, we'll be dedicating that Tennessee quilt that has been on, coming on for two years to make that thing finally complete. And then at 7:00 PM, many of you will be helping. Melanie and Mark, I know, have got the parade on their schedule for 7 o'clock. What's new at this year's fair? We've got the Made in Tennessee Building. We're going to have monster trucks on Monday night. Pick Tennessee Experience that I've told you about, the Farm to Table Dinner. We're going to have dock dogs this year. Pop in Penelope will be building a fair scene in the Farm Bureau Expo Center this year, and she will start on Wednesday before the fair ever starts, and she'll be building that scene all week long. She's supposed to be building an 18-foot fair swell, a farm scene, so I'm looking forward to seeing what she's got there. Farmer Pete is a still walker. He will be talking about ag education as well. We've got the All-American Racing Pigs. They are brand new for this year's fair. Hiliya Hoop will be there entertaining us on most nights. Safari Sam will be bringing his awesome ostrich, Oscar, to the fair. So that will be fun and a good photo op. Something I want everybody, Jerry, I need for you to enter in the husband and mom calling competition. So everybody get lined up for that. This is a fun competition for everybody, and that will be on the operating stage on Saturday, the first Saturday. Corn eating competition. We've got a remote-controlled mini demolition derby that will be new in the school exhibits area this year. And then the state honey and canning competitions will be new state competitions this year. Okay, this tells you that the taste of Tennessee, what those things are, those are listed in this little book. So I'm not going to go over all of this, but something I do want you to know is that there's passport and scavenger hunt to take everybody to the different agriculture exhibits, trying to get everybody to see those as much as we can. We are an agriculture fair. We want to teach people where their food comes from. And so they will be giving out passports for the adults and scavenger hunts for the young people. And you can get, by doing those things, you can then go into the Pick Tennessee area and get prizes for completing those. Okay, our Travel Tennessee Exhibit, I hope all of y'all saw that last year, and that will be in the Made in Tennessee Building this year. And I hope to see every one of you at the fair. And if y'all can help, if you're not helping now, we would love to have you. Come see me. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, very much. And everybody has got a ticket in their packet also, so it's good for all 10 days of the fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just add to what she talked about on Payton Road. Congressman Rose got $2 million last year and another $2 million this year to go with that to help widen that road. Again, the conversation about the widening of the road in front of the Ag Center. I'm in a meeting on Friday with Kristin Ross and Mayor Bell from Lebanon. They have a grant opportunity to go forth for that widening of that road, and so we're meeting to have some conversation about that one as well. Since Mark is here, Mark allows me to do the State of the County on Wednesday from Mount Juliet. And so I'd love for you guys to, if you have an opportunity, to come and listen to that because it's really bragging about you guys. It's at Rutland Place, starts at 11:00, but you need to holler at Mark and let him know on the count if you'd like to come. But definitely would like to involve you there if we could. Also tell you about a neat thing. As a group of mayors, we meet Greater National Regional Council, and we talk about the issues of how we take care of trash in middle Tennessee, because it's becoming an issue more and more with Middle Point getting close to its capacity. And so at our last meeting, we had kind of a think tank, and they said, hey, you know, a lot of times, as older folks, we put rails on things or walls on things because we don't think, we say, well, we can't do that because we've tried that before and that don't work. So they said, what if we got a bunch of students together and let them brainstorm? So Sam Kirk was a professor at Vanderbilt University and said they could set aside a week to bring students from each county down and let them do a think tank and talk about that. So that's happening. Bonnie Holman here in Wilson County Schools set up the students that are going to come from Wilson County and go and take part in that. So that's a pretty neat deal. I'll give you some interest on that as we find out a little bit more about what they come up with, but I thought that was pretty interesting. Mr. Haskell, do you want to tell anybody about the table outside?
There is a table outside that used to have Novitas on it. If there are any, everybody's welcome to them. Get yourself one before you leave.
I didn't realize it was already gone. I hope you saved me and the mayor some here. Elections in importance, Mr. Goodall? Are they all good? Do you hear a motion to approve the notary list?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I did forget, Commissioner McFarland has an announcement.
Well, my fellow commissioners, Mr. Mayor, sometimes the mayor forgets when I kind of remind him.
I have it right here.
But that was really hard act to follow, but I want to share some information with you and an invitation. As you know, our county, Wilton County, is pretty much split down the Middle East to West. The north side belongs to Congressman Rose, which got us almost $4 million. And the southern part of the county, which includes Mount Juliet and Lebanon, is Congressman Andy Ogles. As of 3:15 this afternoon, and lengthy conversation throughout today, nailing down schedules, I'd like to extend an invitation to all the commissioners, their families, their friends, staffs of elected officials and elected officials, for the 7th day of August of next, the 7th day of August, to come to the museum at 9:00 in the morning. Congressman Rose and Congressman Ogles want to meet each and every one of you. They will be there from 9:00 to 10:30. After that, they will go to the Chamber of Commerce, and Melanie and I made some arrangements, and hopefully some of the folks from the western part of the county will be able to come up to that. And then the afternoon schedule is to go to Wilson County Vanderbilt Hospital. But it's an hour and a half of handshaking and thanking and being able to share your thoughts and ideas of the future, what Congress can do for us because the two costs are real. Only time two congressmen that represent this county are going to be here in Wilson County and be able to discuss and talk of the different projects they have and things we may want from them. So again, you're invited to come meet both Congressman Ogles and Congressman John Rose. The public is invited. So again, the public is invited. We'll meet in the front of the museum. We'll have coffee and donuts there, and that will be at 9:00 in the morning on the 7th day of August of this year.
And you're going to get me a flyer, and I'll get that to everybody?
A flyer being produced. This is all this conversation jailed up at 3:15 this afternoon, and I want to share it first here with the fellow commissioners.
And then we'll get it out to everybody so they don't have to worry about the date.
That is correct, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I forgot you. Audit Committee, you are to confirm my appointment for five committee members to serve a one-year term on the Audit Committee. Upon your confirmation, I'd like to appoint Commissioners William Blubber, Commissioners Rusty Keith, Commissioners Danny Clark, along with Mr. John Lancaster and Ms. Lisa McIntosh.
Motion's approved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On Boza, one member, you are to appoint one member to the Board of Zoning Appeals to serve a five-year term, which expires on July of 2028. Like to recommend for your consideration, the alternate there is Ms. Sonia Robinson. She was, she's been an alternate on that board for a couple of years now. Mr. Jerry Dow decided not to reinstate himself. It was his turn. He was there, so he left, and so we moved the opportunity for Sonia Robinson to move up in that. Information about her was in your packet. What is your pleasure?
Question, go for it.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Board of Health, one member. You're to appoint one member to the Board to serve on Board of Health. As retirement of Dr. Wayne Wells, which moved away from here, Dr. Alberto Valdez, Director of the Wilson County Health Department, has recommended Dr. Hardy Searls, the fourth, to serve in his position. That comes from a recommendation from the hospital board to you. Do I hear a motion?
No movement.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This time next, only a general, but the election of the Road Commissioner for Zone Three. The following individuals are eligible to be nominated and will serve now through July of 2030. The Commissioners Eligibles is Commissioner Scruggs from District Seven, Commissioner Hall from District Nine, Commissioner Haskell Evans from District Twelve, Commissioner Glenn Denton from District Twenty, Commissioner Mike Kurtz from District Twenty-One, and Commissioner Danny Clark from District Twenty-four. The floor is now open, and I will take nominations for Road Commissioners Zone Three. Commissioner Hall.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Terry Scruggs.
Commissioner Scruggs, okay. Anyone else, other nominations?
Other nominations, please?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay. Are you ready to vote for Commissioner Scruggs for Zone Three Commissioner? If you are, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect, it was unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Scruggs. Report now from, I thought I stated on the agenda right here. Report from Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Bernard.
No report.
And Emergency Management Directors' report, Director Cooper's out, and Chief Newberry will give that report for us tonight.
Commissioners, you have the packet that has the call volume in there, so I won't go through all those numbers. You've got that at your leisure. If you have any questions, feel free to get with us on that. Just an update, kind of on the overall status of agency. We're right at, I think, 18 positions open. We just closed applications today, and we had around 20, which is more than we've had probably in the last two years. So I personally would attribute that to the pay adjustment that the commission here approved. So that made us way more competitive than we were previously. So thumbs crossed, or fingers crossed that we can, we're going to jump on that and get the application process, or the process started for orientation and all that goes along with that. So we should be cranking that up within the next week or so. Station Three, there in Mount Juliet, we've been in the station, but we had a punch list of items to get fixed, and they should be about done with all those. So they should be doing the final walkthrough if all goes well probably this week. Station 10, on the south side of Central Pike, some delays there with different things, not all out of our control. So that's probably, looking like that may be September before that one is online. That's pretty much all that I've got. Other than, I'll piggyback off what Ms. Helen said. All the public safety agencies, and including Ms. Helen and her group, been a couple of fair meetings, there'll be another one this Wednesday. So all that, you know, behind the scenes is, you know, she takes care of a lot in the fair aspect of it. And then again, all the public safety agencies in the county that have roles in that meet as well. So there's a good safety and security plan that goes on out there that a lot of folks don't see and hopefully don't have to see, you know, especially from a medical standpoint or injuries. But that's going on as well. So that's all I have unless you have any questions.
Motion's approved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chief Newberry.
Thank you.
Report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Kurtz.
No report.
Sheriff's report, Chief Latt's house will be here for Sheriff Ryan.
Commissioners, active reports in your packet. Just to highlight a couple of little items, calls for service were up again this month. I guess the biggest number is an increase in the inmate population in the jail. At one point last month in June, we were 486. As of 5:00 PM this afternoon, we're at 465. Update on moving into the jail. We are finalizing every day, working, training, cleaning. The lightning set us back a little bit. We are preparing to, we've made a lot of those corrections, fixes. We're doing some adjustments to that, so we're very, very close. Chief Newberry is, and Director Cooper's having the same issues we're having. We hired some today. Thank you for your consideration on the pay plan adjustment because I think that has helped us. We're seeing an increase on applications again. As of today, we have 13 open positions in the jail. All the other open positions are due to the positions that were added in the fiscal year under the new budget. So that is my report. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them at this time.
Motion's approved.
Second. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chief. Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
No report.
Director of Schools report, Director Jeff Lutzen.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, you have my report in front of you. It should be in the packet, just some highlights of it. As been mentioned, school start date for students is August 1st. Teachers come back the 26th, start their administration days and professional development At August 1st, just be mindful that we'll be traffic in our school zones. Included for users, school start end times, adjustments been made. We've got to a two-tiered system. Basically, all of our elementary schools, we start at 7:30. Middle schools and high schools, it'll be at 8:30, except for our town high school, kept them at 7:30 due to their, in that zone, all of those students are on one bus. We think that's going to help with our busing, allow us to do more double routes, give us time, for example, to drop off at one area, have a bus route, and then report to another area and run for that middle high school. So we think that will help with our busing situation. Just, it's not in your packet because we're still running the process, but I pulled these numbers today. We'll have another update this week on the 20th, but as of last week, our K-12 enrollment is already showing 20,022 students. We ended the year in K-12, 19,770. That's an upward enrollment of 252 and does not include our pre-K numbers. And of course, we're still signing up students and families now, so we will have an update on the 20th, 27th, and then we'll monitor those numbers the first 10 days of school. But it looks like we're already seeing that trend continue that we've had for the recent years. Personnel update, I've included that. Some administration changes and hires that have been made. You have that in front of you. Still have two open positions, secondary head supervisor, we're still posting, be interviewing for that. And we have a staff attorney opening that we're still interviewing, trying to find someone. We lost our staff attorney. She left, just went to City of Murfreesboro. With that, do want to mention one of those hires specifically, Kenny Hardaway, who is our new transportation director. We introduced him the day to our principles. Comes from a background in transportation, bus transportation, starting all the way up from dispatcher to bus driver to sub bus driver to, he's got a lot of experience. Recent years, he's been handling a trucking fleet, South Carolina. He wanted to return home, get back to middle Tennessee. We're excited. I'm excited about some of the things that he's going to bring and how we handle our transportation. He is committed to transport students, if it means running late routes, whatever it takes. And so, and we are in better shape there than we were to start the school year right now, if we can just close out the next two weeks. Still receiving and training some applicants for that, so I'm excited about the progress we made there. Other than that, included with you, our board meeting agenda, we just completed this past month, or past week, and also included a calendar for you. Shows our days, we're in session and breaks and all that. Wes Wilson, middle school update, coming along nicely. You've been by there, you're starting to see that thing really take shape. Everybody's wanting to know timeframe. We're not at that point yet. It's all depending upon, now we're kind of past the weather, and we know what the weather's going to do a little bit. We're getting that thing dried in, but now it's about supplies and electrical panels, all the supply chain. But as soon as we get that completed, we'll be moving to that. Also, our portables are being placed, have been placed at Drew Middle School and West Elementary, where ramps, we're going up at one of those sites this week, and the other will be next week as we complete those projects and be ready to start school. Thank you for proclamation passed. Thank the chambers for being here tonight, support. Personnel, everybody's wanting to know personnel. Right now, we're still in the hiring season. When I left today, I think it was 84 openings. A lot of those include special education openings. Some of those, we know that we'll be making a decision here in the next few days for some specialty areas that we'll have to contract out for. Just what we're seeing, a trend, we do not have applicants. If you remember last year, I think we started the school year at 75 openings. school. Will be some high knee areas, and we know what those are. But we feel good at this point as we get ready for August 1st start. That's my report. Now entertain any questions we have.
Motion's approved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Director. Report, Registered D's report from Ms. Murphy is in your packet. She is here if you have any questions. Do I hear a motion to approve?
No move.
Second. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Trustees' report is also in there. Do I hear a report? Can we move that one?
We'll move.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Director. Report, Registered D's report from Ms. Murphy is in your packet. She is here if you have any questions. Do I hear a motion to approve?
No move.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Trustees' report is also in there. Do I hear a report? Can we move that one?
We'll move.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Road Secretary Lieutenant report, Mr. Steve Murphy.
Mayor, Commissioners, to this day, we have paved 20.41 miles, still paving as weather permits. Mowers are running, side mounts. We're still doing patchwork across the county as we can, and just doing our general maintenance. That's pretty much it, besides cleaning up trees. We've done our share of that this year. That concludes my report.
Motion's approved.
Second. Discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Act Center report, Mr. Quentin texted me earlier and said he would not be able to be here tonight, that he had some obligations on the grounds, and so the Expo Center report, Ms. Gail Hibbett will be here. As Ms. Gail comes forward, I will say that we did finish in our office the six-year annual, six-year anniversary of the Expo. All of those numbers were good. We'll put those together and get those to you soon, maybe also a little bit of report to go with that, so they were all in the black and positive, and so that's a good thing. Ms. Gail?
Okay, good evening, everybody. My report's pretty simple, but I do have a few details I want to cover. Probably the first thing is the budget. It's two pieces. You will see on the front page that there is a negative 22,461 after analyzing why that might be. Well, we had three pay periods, and this particular month, that did not help. That was about a little over a third of what that deficit was. And then going through the end of the budget year, we paid for a couple of travel opportunities to go to conferences to be able to promote the Expo, and so that money won't come out of this year's budget, so just kind of a trade-off, if you will. So I'm not worried about it. I was going back and looking. If you look at the second page that I've given you, you can kind of see the trend. We're not exactly off the mark by any stretch of the imagination. So it really is a balance and basically the law of averages. Like I've said before, the law of averages, we're still ahead, we're still showing trending a profit of $70,000 for the year. And I can tell you that the booking, looking at the bookings for the rest of this year, for example, in October, we do not have one day in the month that there is not an event either moving in, moving out, or happening. So that's just kind of a good idea of where we're at, and I am currently taking bookings all the way out to 2028. So it's a good thing. We're definitely on the right track. I'm not concerned about it at all. And then also, Zendal was explaining to me that all the purchase orders that came through that were still pending, they pushed them all into June to come out of June. So whereas they should have probably, some of them should have probably come out of July, there was a balance there as well. So, see if any have any questions on the actual financials? No? Okay. I would like to point out, if you look on that second page in the preferred provider at the bottom, you'll see that as of the end of June, we have raised $58,851.45 with our preferred provider program. And you'll see that last year, we brought in about $89,000. That is a very strong program for us. Our preferred providers see the value of it. They appreciate being protected. They appreciate having the opportunity to be promoted. And I already have roughly 15 additional names that want to be added for the upcoming year that we'll start processing in November. So it's a good thing. It's a very good thing. People are seeing the value and appreciating it, and I've spoke with the local hotels. They also are appreciating it because they can see the trend and they're following and they have access. So they're very excited. Speaking of that, with the budget that I got approved for this year, we're redoing the website, and the goal is to meet all three of our constituents. It's the people attending Expo for different events. It's our constituents in the hotels and the retail and the restaurants that are out here that we want to support. And then we have our event planners, and they all need different things from us. So we are building it with some back structure to help us serve each one of those better. Very excited about that. Third planning meeting is in the works next week. So then you have a list of our upcoming events, and that just kind of gives you a highlight of what's coming for the rest of the year. I take note of, if you've got kids or grandkids, or you know people that have kids or grandkids, they want to come out to Brick Universe. It's going to be Labor Day weekend. You don't want to miss it. It's going to be huge. They're very excited to come back. They were here one other time, and I got them to come back. So if you know people, go to our Facebook page, all the details are there. Farm Bureau Expo, you'll be able to find the details on the Brick Universe. We do have an Olympic weightlifting event coming up, which I think is going to be very cool. And then one of the events that we just had was Classic Green. Everything John Deere, everything was green and yellow for an entire week. But they appreciated the grounds, they appreciated the Expo, they appreciated the welcoming of the community, and they turned around and gave back over $1,500 back into the community as a gift to say thank you. So those are the kinds of event planners that we really appreciate because they do appreciate the community and they do give back at the same time. Some of the things that we're working on is we are focusing, we are getting more state of Tennessee events. They're leaving downtown Nashville and coming out here. That makes me extremely happy because they're extremely easy to do. And then we're also getting a huge migration coming out of Murfreesboro. That also makes me really happy because we're able to provide them, what they're telling us is we're able to provide them a service and a value that they can't get in Murfreesboro. And so as that word continues to spread because these event planners talk, that's why I'm not worried about June's numbers, because that's going to continue. And we're also looking at the basic maintenance needs. As the mayor just pointed out, we are, what, seven, you said seven? We are seven years old, right?
We finished the six-year anniversary.
Yeah.
We are going to be seven.
Right. So we've got some basic maintenance that needs to happen, and so we're looking to see that and prioritize that at the same time. And then I would be remiss, I appreciate the proclamation for the Day of Prayer as Kwanis. I'm the current president of Kwanis here in Lebanon, and I just want all of our Commissioners to know, we're having a clergy recognition day on August 7th. So if you want to let the ministers of your church know about it, have them contact me, we would love to have them. We would like to honor them and have a lunch for them at the same time. So that is all I have in my report. Does anybody have any questions on the report or the financial of anything? Because I have one other surprise thing to do. Okay. So you all have a tablet on your desk, and it had a picture of the Expo on top. So I did a thing. I contracted Phil Ponder to draw the Expo, and I contracted him to draw it. I wanted it to be in the essence of what County Commission approved, not somebody's name on it, nothing like that. I just want it to be the Expo as it was approved by the County Commission, and I know that it was a labor of love, and I know it took a long time. So here's the big version of the print. All right? I have ordered 50 of the large ones, and I have ordered 50 of a smaller one, because not everybody has a big wall to put this on. The large ones are numbered and signed, the smaller ones are signed, and they are available for sale if you want them. There will not be a second run. What I have is what I have, and when they're gone, they're gone. So I just wanted to make them available and also say thank you for the opportunity that you guys chose to build the Expo, because I take great pride, the entire team takes great pride in bringing in these events and making it something that the county can be proud of, because it's making us money. So if you have any questions on the prints or you want one, email me, call me. My cell phone, 615-864-6779, and my county email is pretty easy to find. All right? Any questions for me on the prints or the report? No?
Do I hear a motion to approve?
We'll move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Gail. We appreciate that. Report from Public Works Committee, Commissioner Weathers.
No report.
Act Center Management, Commissioner Scruggs.
No report.
Animal Control, Commissioner Marlowe.
No report.
And I will say this, that I did get a talk from, a conversation today from Mary Scruggs, and she said that Gretchen Wilson gave her a check today to Animal Control for $9,000 along with the projects she's doing. So that is a positive thing definitely for us. Audit, Commissioner Glover.
No report.
Broadband Access, Commissioner Franklin.
No report.
Development Tourism, Commissioner Brown.
No report.
Ethics, Commissioner Dow.
No report.
Finance, Commissioner Coswell.
No report.
Health and Recreation, Commissioner Smith.
No report.
Insurance, Commissioner McFarland.
No report.
Judicial Commissioners entry.
Judicial Committee met on the 19th of July. The minutes are in your packet. Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Planning and zoning, Commissioner McFarland.
No report.
Rules, Commissioner Keith.
No report.
Urban Type Society Board, Commissioner Scruggs.
Urban Type Society Board met July the 14th. It's in your packet, received and filed.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Finance Director's report, Mr. Aaron Maynard.
The budget is up on the county website, under the County Commission Finance page. So that did go public today. I will have your books probably within a week to 10 days. We usually give you the binders now that have the budget in there. So that's all coming. The report is into the state. Rounded the corner coming into my office this morning and saw the auditors are already here briefly, so we're working on your end. And real quickly, I know we're all crossing our fingers on timeframe tonight. Real quickly, I want to thank particularly the Budget Committee and the mayor for helping get the budget together this year, but also all of you guys who attend.